I officially call this meeting open. Okay, I would like to open with the motion to approve the minutes. So if somebody would like to, I'll make that motion.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good, thank you. We, first on the agenda is the continued, oh, I'm sorry. I should have taken your own call. So Phil Subay, present.
Joe Duzo, present.
Leonard Moza, present.
Caroline Paulson, present.
And Joe Moriello is present. Thank you, sorry about that. So in terms of the public hearings, we are continuing a motion to continue the public hearings for Trans Hudson Management CBS. So this is ongoing. I would like to entertain a motion, or somebody please entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to the March meeting at the request of the applicant.
I so move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along, thank you very much. This evening we are looking at a, to open a public hearing on the Jim and Marion, ah, sorry, Marilyn Littlefoot area variance. So do I have a motion to open that hearing?
I so move.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Having said that, are there any members of the public that have any comments? I guess not, okay.
You have the two written comments.
Yeah.
We do have, we do have written, that is correct. We do have written comments, and for the record, I did visit yesterday myself and reviewed the property as well. So having said that, I don't know if there are any further questions at this point, or any further comments that anybody has about this particular application?
I have no comments or questions. We had a introduction, yes, at the last meeting to let us know what was going on. I don't know if Joe needs to hear it again?
Yeah, I need to hear a little bit because I wasn't here, so I have no opinion whatsoever left or right what's going on here, so I have to, you know, give me just a quick synopsis.
Ask the board, would you, would you like to come forward?
I'm even better prepared. This is not, I never do those.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm better prepared because Kelly sent me a beautiful, beautiful map of myself and surrounding properties, and I said, "This is why we need the variance." Okay, so the yellow is my property, our property, and it's long and narrow, okay? And the pink indicate the houses, Shiver Town Road. So that's our house pretty close to Shiver Town Road. Our downside, west side neighbors, close to Shiver Town Road. The Christie's set back quite a bit, and the Moreheads also set back quite a bit. So what we're looking at is an addition in this back corner. Fifteen point six feet back and eleven point five feet wide, which is the width of the existing room. Now, why do we need the variance? Because this long, nice piece of land is slanted. So although our house is parallel to Shiver Town Road, the front corner of the house is twenty-five point four feet from the property line, because the slant, the back corner, is twenty-one point four feet from the property line. And then, when you get to an addition, it's nineteen feet from the property line. So we're asking for five percent relief, one foot variance. We have received voluntarily, I might add, letters from all of these three neighbors, which is very nice. And the nice part of the property, I'll repeat myself when you ask me these questions, is this is all woods, there's a wooded buffer here, and there's no immediate neighbor here. So that's why it's like the only corner of the property to do any addition to.
Just don't impact anybody.
Nothing, not even to a leaf.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay, I got it.
Good.
And to repeat, they do have letters on file from the neighbors.
I'm good.
Okay, any, any other questions at this point? Everyone good?
No, no questions from me.
And again, I did visit it yesterday, and at the end of the day, we're talking about one foot, because the line consists of a bit of an angle in the property, and there's nobody really close by, you know, so.
And there's a nice wooded edge along there that creates a lot of privacy most of the year, so, all of the year, but more in the, when there's leaves, so there.
There's a lot of evergreen there.
Yeah, yeah.
What about this?
I don't know.
No, I, I, did you want to add something?
Well, no, just if you wanted to ask me the questions, I was ready.
Yeah, I mean, we are, that will be the next step in the process. So first and foremost, whether, we have to ask whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, which will be created by the granting of the area variance.
Okay, and the answer is no. The house is going to get a nice twenty-year update. The addition is modest, and it's going to be attractive, and so that it blends in, the entire house is going to be re-sided, and the entire roof is going to be redone with a new metal roof, so it's going to look attractive.
Any questions? No. Having been there, I would not disagree with that, okay. Whether the benefits sought by yourselves can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance.
The only other way to go would have been up to a second floor. There would have been no benefit to it, because I have a knee-related injury, and I don't climb stairs, so there's no benefit to being a second floor. So this is truly, other than the one foot, this is the ideal place to expand.
Questions?
No.
Good, okay, very good, thank you. Whether, again, the requested area variance is substantial.
Okay, my answer is no, because it's five percent release, relief, or known as one foot.
Good, okay, thank you. Again, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
No, we're not removing any trees, and my husband, I'm sure, will add additional trees, shrubs, flowering plants to that corner, once we construct.
Good, yep, good, okay. And finally, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance.
No, it was not self-created. Whoever created the property line may have been a little drunk that day.
Or set the house, or built the house.
Right, and that's all we can say.
More like, built the house.
Any questions, Board?
No.
Alrighty, then, then having said that, I would like to, see if anybody would like to entertain a motion to grant.
I so move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Appreciate it, appreciate it, okay, alright.
Alrighty, so next up, we have Mr. Frank Di Maria, looking for a variance on Fieldstone Drive. Frank, you want to come on up and present your case, please?
Oh, gentlemen, ladies, I recently moved to New Falls. Been here for just about five years now, got myself established. I worked for a big construction company up north. The house that we have purchased is a raised ranch. The basement was converted before I bought it, under permit to accommodate a family room in the basement. When we purchased the home, I said, "You know what, someday I'd like to put a garage here for my toys, cars, lawnmower." Now that we're here, I'm financially able to do that. Just learning the rules and regulations and the zoning laws and stuff, I end up moving, encroaching into the twenty-foot distance to the property line, and the twelve-foot distance from the house to the accessory building, if you want to call it that. I did draw up a few things. There's a presentation of a garage. If you look at the existing picture of the driveway, there's a planter box that would actually be the front of the garage, once I was to get started. The planter box, the back wall of the planter box would represent the garage doors, really.
Oh, so you've got a, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, there's a white line?
Yeah, I, I, I painted stuff, you know, I do a lot of survey layout at work, so in my spare time, I tried to draw it in every which angle to fit it in the parameters given by the town, and was very unable to do that, to make it look aesthetically pleasing from the road. In the picture, you'll notice there's a fence in the back. I end up being within, I come within, what do I got, twelve feet, thirteen feet of that fence, in which I'm proposing a few extra bushes. There is a good tree cover along there. The gentleman who lives in the opposing house is, from what I understand, ninety-six years old, he comes out on occasion. And then I end up being within six feet of the corner of the house. That's to give me a twenty-two by twenty-two garage, which is, you know, if anybody has a truck, you could just barely fit a pickup truck in that garage. But my wife has two small cars that I'd like to be able to put in there. And the white lines were representing angling the garage, and trying to put it behind the house, and coming up with different locations. So I'm looking to go seven feet into that twenty-foot distance, and six foot into the six-foot distance, which would square up this garage at my house. It would be detached. Two garage doors in the front, a side man door, and a possible six-by-six door in the back to get the lawn tractor out, to my property side, not, not the adjacent homeowner. It would definitely help me clean up with all the stuff my kid has laying around in the yard. It'd increase the value of my home, and like every gentleman on the face of the earth has a garage.
Never have enough, never have big enough.
Like I said, you know, I tried to do the best I could with getting a twenty-two by twenty-two garage, and they're giving me two front doors and a side door. A little bit of depth for my wife to crash into the back and all from the car, and.
And once again, we have a slanting property line.
We definitely have a slanting property line, and I've tried on several occasions to figure out why they did that, because I have attached the lot development plans and stuff. I almost think I have the most crooked lot on the block.
Has anybody had a chance to go?
I, I drove by.
Okay.
Yeah, didn't see the need to knock on your door or anything, it was pretty obvious just from looking at, from the road.
Yeah, you know, my son's on the New Falls basketball team, every basketball team in New Falls. He has a basketball hoop in the driveway, and, you know, unfortunately, I gotta go move three cars out to the street, so he can play basketball. Would be able to put two away, and a lot of the other stuff that's laying around the outside of the house that doesn't look great. So it will be a metal building, so it will be fireproof.
Which is, we have a kind of a drawing, a picture of what it would probably look like.
Yeah, that building will be made out of one hundred percent sheet metal.
Right.
And it would have decorative garage doors on the front with some old-fashioned, I'm going to spend some money on some nice garage doors, and, you know, light on each side eventually, and definitely. The house is going to be re-sided in the spring, early summer. Obviously, the garage might come first. If it does, the house will match the garage, and then the shed that's there will also be painted to match, and I propose some extra plants, and even though the tree line here is heavy in the summertime, I really can't see the neighbor's house with all the leaves on the trees.
You show a concrete slab here?
Yes.
Is that a patio?
No, that's going to be what the garage is on top of.
Okay.
Okay?
And this is all your property back in here?
Oh, yeah, yes. I have the actual.
Survey.
Yeah, the survey map is attached here to, I think the one that they gave to Stacy, the bigger sheets here. If you come in Fieldstone, it would be this lot here.
Okay.
Okay, and this, it is straight from the street, but the, the actual house is here, it's not the big square that everybody looks at. This is the house here, so it's angled towards the street this way, not like you'd think the house should have been back here, square with the street, this way.
And what is that big square? It's just a?
That's, I think that's the approved area for the septic field and stuff.
Okay, alright.
And it is, it's over here.
Okay.
So that garage would actually fall in here, like this, being square with the road here.
Right.
Putting it this way really brings it to the property line.
Right.
And putting it back here is even worse.
And you can't, if you went parallel with the property line this way?
No, because then it's, then you're actually pulling into the garage, it doesn't look that, this, this way, but if you would have, you know what you're saying, this being that property line?
Yeah, yeah.
It would put you something like this.
Right.
Coming in and trying to back out, and, yeah, it just doesn't fit back there. And this is how much of it actually goes over this triangle.
Because you're looking for what, it's got to be twenty-five feet?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty feet from the property line.
Seven feet or eight?
Twelve from the house, and I end up with six. So it's this pizza shape here, and this pizza shape here. You know, I tried my hardest to put it back over here, it just doesn't work, because the septic field, the tank, you have to be ten feet from the tank, or ten feet from the center line of the tank, something like that. So it actually puts this over here, with this corner touching here, and then you're trying to back out of here, you know, you back into a tree that's over here, you can't cut the trees down along the fence, you know, because that, that's really the buffer line between the site distance and stuff.
That, to me, looks like the better place to put it.
You know, you're back out of the garage, you turn around, and then you pull straight out. You pull straight in, you pull straight in, you know. I tried several, you can see, I painted on the ground to try and squeeze it in every, I tried painting.
One of, one of the questions that, that I had asked when I was out there, which, which the Board would ask the same thing, is there, you know, is there an alternative opportunity? And, and that was discussed, and really, the, the only potential alternative is to do an extension of the house. But if you do an extension of the house.
Do an extension of the house.
You're losing basically most of the existing.
Now you're in the driveway, and you have no parking for anything.
This number here is, your, your house is sixty-seven feet?
Plus or minus, yeah, it's close to that. Within inches of that from the edge of the road, from the edge of the grass and the paint. It's sixty-seven feet.
Okay, so what happens if you put your garage this way?
It doesn't fit.
What do you need from the front?
I think you have to be fifty.
What do you need from the front?
Fifty. I think it's fifty.
Fifty?
Fifty or so. I explored that a very long time ago, maybe thinking about putting it here, but then this twenty-foot line comes down here, and you, you end up with more garage in here, and you're within that fifty-foot of the road. And then where do you back out of the garage, onto the front, you know?
Well, you just have to make your driveway.
Yeah, you know, that's not the end of the world either, but you're ended up, it just, the, the only thing that really made sense, and that was aesthetically pleasing to the, to the layout of the road, was having a garage that was as square as possible to the house, right where you would expect to see a garage.
Right, behind the house, as opposed to in front of the house.
You know, I don't want to stick something out here that everybody in the world's going to object to, you know. It just doesn't fit, because you're way into that distance of fifty feet over here.
And you lose most, a chunk of your driveway.
You lose just about everything.
Has your ninety-six-year-old neighbor commented on this?
The ninety-six-year-old neighbor? I have seen the guy maybe ten times since I moved in five years ago, and honesty's the best policy. The people who lived here have a spotlight that was on the side of the house. When I moved in, I have the letter, he had called the wonderful New Falls Police Department and said that the light was shining in his yard, so the police came, and they walked around, and they didn't have any problem with the light, but I adjusted the light down, and they went away. And that was really the only interaction I've ever had with the guy, and there was nothing between me and him. He dropped this letter in my mailbox, and went on his way. He's the gentleman who used to own this whole parcel of land that Fieldstone Drive is built on, and from what I understand, he wasn't happy that he, he sold it, and he was happy he sold it, but I don't think he was happy when they developed it.
Well, they say a good deal is if everybody is, nobody's ever happy.
There's no objection from any of my other neighbors about it, and if I need to walk over and knock on his door and shake his hand, and do whatever I can to get my garage so I can take care of my personal items, pretty much everybody, I guess, has been notified.
Well, they're gonna be, if we move forward. I explained that to Frank.
Yeah, if we move forward, I will do whatever legwork I have to, I'll write up a letter, and walk around and have everybody sign it, or whatever you guys instruct me to do.
I think that's the best way to go forward with it, is to get your neighbors A and A's on it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Because I feel for you, because, you know, I know it's like to have a garage, and.
You'd be lost without it.
Yes.
You know, there is a shed in the back that I have all my stuff in, but I can't even get in, you know. So if I can, you know, put my lawn tractor in here, and then just keep my tools and stuff in my shed where they.
I feel you.
Along, yeah.
Yeah, well, the process of.
I work for a construction company.
The process of notifying your neighbors is automatic anyway, so that's going to happen, yeah. And the other neighbors are pretty far.
Everybody is far away, if you look at the map. The nearest neighbor is, is probably this gentleman, and from, from this line to his house is probably a hundred feet. And there is a good buffer here with trees, and I'll add trees. But I did explore every avenue to try and get, get it in someplace, it just didn't make sense, and then talking with Stacy, she said, "Connect it." But how do you connect a square garage to a ranch house? You know, what are you going to do, put it in the back?
Maybe you lose all those.
Put a two-by-four across to connect it? It just doesn't, nothing made sense, other than just a.
If you connect it, you'd lose all the windows that were there.
Yeah, but it, it won't connect, because it's a raised ranch, so it's a walkout basement. This side of the house, you walk right out to grade. Now, if you put the garage back here and try and attach it, the roof line's going to be.
It's like a high ranch?
Yeah, yeah.
So when you walk in the door, you've got stairs?
Yeah, I got, I got six steps going up and six going down.
Oh, I know that.
And this side of the house is all on driveway grade, so you walk out right to grade. It just doesn't, I just couldn't find any sensible way of doing it, without spending a hundred thousand dollars on some crazy redesign of my house. I did try and tuck it back in here, but like I said, the septic tank is back here, then ten feet of it sticks out, or twelve feet of it sticks out, and you have two garage doors here, then you're back in the car out the side.
There was no original one-car garage in this?
There was a two-car garage in the basement, here, and here.
Because usually this house is built with a.
Right, and the dividing wall was here, the stairs going in were here, and then back up over here, or not, down and up.
Because you always had at least a garage.
Right, they converted it many years, many years ago, maybe ten years ago.
But you didn't, you didn't do it.
No, I didn't do it, we bought it that way. And it's a great living space, you know, it just, especially on that kind of a house. Because if they didn't do that, then you end up with just two small rooms in the basement on that side, that you really can't do anything, if you're familiar with a raised ranch-type house. You know, you end up with a laundry room, and.
These guys are.
Oh, you both have them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to build a lot of them.
I don't mind, so, it was all, I closed on the house, so it was all permitted, and, right, when they did it.
So, so, you know, what, what, when I saw it, what, what Mr. Di Maria is saying makes sense to me from the visuals that I saw when I was there, okay? I, I would agree that, I didn't, I didn't see a whole lot of options, but I would like to leave it up to the Board to, to ask any further questions at this point, before we consider this any further.
And that's more what we'd left like, I was saying, you know, because the picture that I had put on there, it had the door on the other side, this was a more recent one.
Good.
This would just access the backyard nice and easily. I don't know if anybody's familiar with the, with the metal garages that they're building, but they've just come such a long way.
They don't look like metal garages.
What? Barely. When you're all done with nice doors, and, and, you know, they, they really, they look nice.
Mr. Di Maria?
Yes.
Sick question. On this drawing.
Yes.
This curved log.
That just represents twelve feet. If you carried that twelve feet around, this would be twelve feet from here, twelve feet from here.
Okay, so this is a structure.
No, no, this is just a piece of the garage that would stick into that twelve-foot area, and then the other piece would stick in there.
I see, okay.
Thank you.
Could get weird with that design, just.
Yeah, every house on the block.
Yeah, well, you use the same building problem.
The only house that's square is the new one on the corner over here, that's not on here, it's up there.
Probably not a ranch either, is it?
No, it's a raised ranch on the corner. Yeah, it's only been there two years.
Oh, okay.
This is what my, what I'm proposing, and.
How, unless I go to the next step?
Well, I'll, I'll throw it out to the Board at this point, then. Is there a motion to move to set a public hearing for March eighth?
That would be fine.
Yep.
Second?
Yeah.
So moved?
So moved, yes.
All approved? Okay, all approved. All right, so then we, we set a public hearing for March eighth. Kelly will assist you with, with that process, you know, you're going to have to, you know, put a sign up, and the neighbors will get notified, and then.
Can I get one of the message boards that I use on the highway?
And, and then, you know, and you would return on March eighth for that hearing, and then if anybody, if the public has any issues, they would be, you know, invited to participate.
Is, is, I'll just deal with her on what I need to get signed from the neighborhood?
Kelly will help you out with that, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Well, thank you, much appreciated. Alrighty, so that's, that piece of it. Is there any old business?
No, no business.
No old business?
No old business.
No old business, no old business, okay?
Can we ask a question amongst ourselves?
Yes, can we ask questions amongst ourselves?
I just got a question with the CBS thing. What is going on?
Yes, that, that is a good question.
Procedurally, I don't know. I suspect, though, that Kelly, as the Secretary to the Planning Board, probably knows better what's going on. I, I think they're just locked in the planning board process.
After the board out.
And depending on what happens there, they may or may not need the variances that they originally requested, okay? Because from what I'm following in the paper, the plan, I guess, is changing about every time they go to a meeting, and, and so maybe things are getting to a point where they're not, they don't need the septic variances, but Kelly may not. The question is why the continued public hearing on CBS? And I suspect it's because of where they are in the planning.
Right, because the Planning Board has still not completed SECR. When SECR is completed, and they make a determination of the significance of impacts, they might find, potentially, that in order to eliminate one impact, which might be green space or something, that they would then say, "Okay, you can make the building taller," or trade off one thing for another, in which case then they would need the variances again. The proposal, as it stands right now, we do not need the variances, but since they paid for them, and they have an open public hearing on them, they would like to maintain that, just in case once SECR is over, they might need to change that plan and request those variances again, in which case we'll still have those open public hearings, they'll need to be re-noticed, because we might have time in between, but it would save the reaplication process.
Alrighty, and so it goes, and so it goes.
It's like a pregnant, it's like a pregnant elephant.
There is no limit in code as to how many times you can, or how long you can continue the public hearing.
Right.
Right.
Unless you close it, there's time limits.
Okay.
If it remains open, there is no.
Okay. Certainly, all of these requests are at the request of the applicant.
Correct.
So I don't think there's any problem, legal problem for the Board to grant the request. It's not like you're adjourned.
Get them to the end, speak them to you.
Right, because it seems like every meeting we have, it comes up, and it just moves on. I'm just, I just, you know, just curious, that's all.
Again, I think that the, the process is also to try to avoid the applicant getting whipsawed between the two Boards. As Kelly said, if they came. As Kelly said, if they came for the variances and they granted the variances, but it's premature in the planning process and CECL process, you're liable to find another applicant, then they'll send them back to this Board again to say, "Undo those variances," because the planning board now suggest that we ask for a different variance, and the applicant just gets whipsawed between the two boards.
Right.
So, this is probably, in this particular case, the better solution. It, you know, it's a long process before the planning board with this particular application, but those happen.
It makes me wonder, as a new member here, you know, should I actually be trying to follow all the twists and turns of this, or, but I guess not. I mean, I guess I should just look to inform myself when variances are posted and we have to deal with them.
You know, certainly, having an interest in what's going on before the planning board is fine.
Yeah, but...
The job of this Board is a little different than what's happening at the planning board level, though.
Very different.
It may or may not even get to us.
It may or may not ever get back to this Board. If that plan changes, we're no variances required.
Right.
Then you have no job at all.
So, having said that, are there any administrative issues that need to be discussed? Are we good?
No, we're good.
We're good?
You were going to do a quorum check, right?
Check on the March meeting, will we...
I have no issues right now. I plan to be here.
I expect to be here.